On the agenda, please fill out a gold speaker card and hand it to the police officer in the back of the room. The mayor will call your name when it's your turn to speak, and you can make your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you'd like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wyers, Vice Mayor Jamie Aldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mounner of the Tawaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
I got that.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could we someday maybe do some...
You know what? We have a moment to add.
I think I know more than most.
I didn't forget. I didn't bring my...
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of October 25th, 2022. The meeting is called order. Sorry we're running a minute or so late. Had some executive session issues to deal with. Attendance roll call is not necessary. Everybody is here. So if you could please take note, our next two items on our agenda are the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Our invocation is going to be by Pastor Alan Bartim Ioli of Faith Bible Church. Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Perfect. Gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if you'd please remove it if it's appropriate. Everyone please stand for the invocation. And if you'd remain standing for a pledge of allegiance afterwards. Pastor.
Would you guys join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you for your love and goodness to us. You are Creator and Lord of all, and I acknowledge your perfect providence over all of our creation. You're holy and perfect, and we are not. So I ask you for your guidance tonight for these men and women as they have been chosen to lead us. I acknowledge that you put people into place to govern over the affairs of mankind. You also ask us to honor them. So Father, accepting that you care deeply about justice and mercy and that we can ask you for wisdom, I pray for these leaders to seek and receive your wisdom. I pray for them to set their eyes on things above, not on earthly things, but on things that matter to you and to not be distracted by trivial things like power and selfish ambition. I pray that they would be servants just like your son, Jesus. I pray that they would seek to make Glendale a more virtuous place to live. I pray for them to provide us with the help and to help enforce the laws, to create just laws that protect the innocent and give great pause to those who would seek to do harm. I pray for them to deal prudently with those who would use their power to take advantage of those who are under-resourced in this season of life. Father, I pray for a provision for those who are struggling with the cost of things right now. Help us as a people to join together to consider our part in helping those who are going without. May those who have plenty choose to be generous rather than hoarding, to be kind rather than lording over those who go without. Father, during this season of uncertainty, help us to love with reckless abandon. I pray for the upcoming election that you would give us the grace to elect leaders who love people more than power, who truly embrace what it means to be a public servant. And Father, I pray that we would be a people after your own heart. Father, we need you so desperately. Your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven. And I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. If you want to just stay right there, we'll do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, next on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from October 11, 2022. Voting meeting, councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve October 11, 2022 meeting minutes?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second. I have motion from Councilmember Melner, second, Councilmember Hugh to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Do you have it? Motion carries. No proclamations today, boards, commissions, and other bodies? Have we anybody here getting on a board tonight? Okay, we do have somebody good. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move that. Mr. Turner.
Mayor, I move we appoint Timothy Carson to the Board of Adjustments for a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Further, that we appoint Lisa Baker as Chair of the Community Development Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30th of 2023. And lastly, that we appoint Leslie Mealy as Vice Chair of the Community Development Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Do you have it? That motion carries. Folks that just got nominated and elected, I'm going to come down to the podium. We'll have you come up and I'll swear in. Okay, last chance. Anybody else? Okay, if you're holding a sign, you have to put the sign down, sir, or put it up against the back wall. Thank you. Okay, so if you would, hold your right hand up, say aye, state your name.
Aye, Timothy Carson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
The state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Give them a round of applause, folks. Let's get it. I guess I'm staying up here. We've got something else we've got to do. So I'd like to start off, let all of you know that we're going to be swearing in for the reappointment of our presiding Judge Nicholas DiPiazza. I'd like to thank the judge for his great care, his professionalism at our city court. In addition, I really want to make sure that everybody understands and recognizes Judge DiPiazza for his efforts to establish the Glendale Veterans Court, which has been so successful in such a short time. We're now standing up a West Valley Veterans Court that all of the West Valley cities and towns have been invited to participate in. Judge, great job. Come on up here, let's get you sworn in. Want to go on this side? All right, let's come over here.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you would, hold up your right hand. Actually, that's the wrong one.
Wrong hand, wrong hand.
That's the wrong one, yeah. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Nicholas DiPiazza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Impartially discharge the duties.
Impartially discharge the duties.
Of presiding judge of Glendale.
Of presiding judge of Glendale.
City court.
City court.
Maricopa County.
Maricopa County.
State of Arizona.
State of Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I know it. Oh, well.
Can we get a picture here real quick?
Yeah. It'd be honored.
Come on up front. Give them a round, folks. All right. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda items four through 11. Items on the consent agenda, they're of routine nature, they've been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. Now, they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Perfect. Can I have a motion from someone to approve consent agenda items four through 11?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt consent agenda items four through 11.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from the Vice Mayor to approve the consent agenda items four through 11. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Do you have it? That motion carries. Consent resolutions, Ms. Bauer, could you introduce consent resolutions, items 12 through 15 by number and title?
Item 12, resolution number R-22-106, resolution of council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement between the United States Department of Justice, Drug Enforcement Administration, and the Glendale Police Department for continued participation in a program-funded state and local task force through federal fiscal year 2025. Item 13, resolution number R-22-107, resolution of council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement and authorizing the acceptance expenditure of the 2022 Arizona Department of Homeland Security Grant Program Award for the 2022 Urban Area Security Initiative, Glendale Fire Department, RRT Sustainment Agreement Number 220809-02, and the approximate amount of $85,000 on behalf of the Glendale Fire Department. Item 14, a resolution number R-22-108, a resolution of council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing entering into a grant agreement with the state of Arizona, grant number E3M3L01C, and the acceptance and expenditure of grant funds in the amount of $75,085 to rehabilitate, realign, and reconstruct taxiways A4 and A6 at the Glendale Municipal Airport. Item 15, resolution number R-22-109, resolution of council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, to amend and restate memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Glendale and Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management and the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. And that concludes consent resolutions.
Thank you. I have one card here that is not identified. Mr. David Haas, you didn't put what item you wanted to speak on, sir.
I'm sorry, item 18.
Item 18. Okay. Okay. We have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items 12 through 15 on the consent resolutions agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve items 12 through 15 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have motion from Councilmember Hugh, second, Councilmember Tomachoff to approve items 12 through 15 on the consent resolutions agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Do you have it? That motion carries. Bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 16?
Award of RFP 22-27 and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Western Towing of Phoenix, Inc., for city fleet towing and police-directed citizen vehicle towing. There are no speaker cards.
Good. Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 16?
Yes, Mayor. I move we award RFP 22-27 to Western Towing of Phoenix, Inc.
Second.
I have motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second, Councilmember Hugh. Is to approve the recommended action, is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
On this item and the subsequent item, they are five-year contracts. I will be voting no, as is my standard practice, because it does not provide continuity of council oversight when it is a four-year, a five-year contract. Thank you.
And with that, you?
I vote nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 17, please?
Award of RFP 22-41 and authorization to enter into an agreement with multiple vendors for temporary staffing services. There are no speaker cards.
Okay. Nothing, okay. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 17?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we award RFP 22-41 and authorize the city manager to enter into the agreements described therein.
Second.
I have motion from Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Tomachoff. No discussion, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to land development actions, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 18?
AN-243, annexation of approximately 276 acres located at the northwest and northeast corner of Olive Avenue and Cervel Avenue, public hearing.
Okay, and tonight, this requires only a public hearing. We do have some speaker cards up here, so we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. You want to get us started?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council here provide staff report this evening on items 18 through 22 is Tabitha Perry, our planning administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Before you is the annexation petition for Park 303 East. The subject property is approximately 276 acres in size, and it's located at the northwest and northeast corner of Cervel and Olive Avenues. The subject property is currently in the county with a zoning classification of RU43 that allows for residential. The applicant is proposing a major general plan amendment to change the land use designations to allow for light industrial, as well as a rezoning application to PAD to allow for approximately 4.38 million square feet of industrial zoning. As council is aware, upon the annexation, if it's approved at a future coming public hearing, that the property would take on the city most compatible zoning, which would allow for the RR45, which will also allow for a single-family residential. So based on the direction that we received from council, the proposal for the major general plan, as well as the rezoning, would support additional industrial land uses. Here's an annexation map showing the subject property in comparison to other properties that has been annexed in the city. As you can see to the north, there is county residential properties in which the applicant, as well as staff knows, are aware that there are some concerns. And throughout the rezoning application, the applicant, as well as staff, would take the comments from the citizens in consideration as we look at development standards, as well as landscaping setbacks. Here's an area map just depicting the subject property in comparison to other land uses in the surrounding area. And with that, Mayor and council, now would be a good time to open up the public hearing for a citizen input.
Okay, I've already done that, so if you're finny, we'll ask Mr. Haas if he'd like to come up. For all of you, you'll have three minutes to speak. There's a timer, there's a red, yellow, and green light. You know what that means. When it turns red, I'll ask that you finish speaking. Mr. Haas, and then after you, Mr. Fairbanks, if you'll be ready to go when he's done. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, hello. I have a property in the subdivision that's just at the north edge of this development, 12 Oaks subdivision. I'm a realtor, so other members of the community will probably speak on other aspects, but I'll just touch base on the real estate side of it. I have over 30 sales in this subdivision. I own a lot in there myself, and I feel that putting industrial buildings, especially 50-foot high, this close to this type of neighborhood, and this just isn't a regular residential neighborhood, I'll refer to the homes as product. The product in this neighborhood is nicer than any home, any subdivision, in surprise. The values are in between the $1 million and $2 million range of these homes in this subdivision. I feel that having industrial building to the south of this neighborhood will greatly affect, negatively affect, the values and the quality of life in this neighborhood. I estimate, value-wise, at today's values, it would affect the properties between $100 and $200,000 per property. I already have three sales in there for 2022, and two of those sales were because of people that did not want the industrial buildings and the development encroaching on this neighborhood. They have decided to move into other neighborhoods, move away, because their quality of life has decreased with the additional industrial development in the area. That is it.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Fairbanks, you have three minutes. After you, Brandon Kipple, if you'd be ready to go, I'd appreciate it. Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Great, thank you.
All right, you know what? Let's back up. I need to know your name and the city you live in, if it's not Glendale, if it is Glendale, your crossroads.
Sure. So it's Matthew Fairbanks. I'm in Waddell. I'm on the same 12 Oaks estate neighborhood, directly adjacent to the parcel that we're discussing. I'm here to voice my opposition and serious concern about it. So I moved here recently, within the last year, from a small farm that I own, I have owned, I have five kids, and we picked this area specifically for the agricultural and space that the West Valley provides. And I think it'd be a serious mistake, and I have very serious concerns already about much of the industrial buildings going up in the area. I don't let my kids bike or walk around those areas, because I don't think it's safe. I mean, as I drove to this meeting, I counted, you know, 15 to 20 semi-trucks and cars just parked on the side of the road outside these areas, and it's a serious safety hazard. Further, I feel like it's not consistent with the city of Glendale 2040 plan. I mean, when you read even the statement, I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with it, it says, quote, "Our desire is to achieve all-encompassing balance in a community that is friendly, nurturing, and safe for all citizens. Glendale's image is progressive, is progressive with emphasis on family values, including education, outdoor enjoyment, culture, and economic vitality. We support economic and social division from well-maintained, clean, visually attractive urban neighborhoods to the spacious, outlying rural areas that remind us of our agricultural heritage and strongly support the mission of Luke Air Force Base." So as I dropped my kids off from school this morning and drove home, I just decided I would go ahead and count how many industrial buildings I could see. And this wasn't like I was driving across the whole valley, this is just up the 303 corridor. I counted 39 today that are either complete or under construction. So I feel like my biggest concern is safety, and my second biggest concern is it doesn't align with the plan that you guys have in place for the 2040 Glendale plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kipple, you're up, sir, and then Christopher Healy, if you could be ready to go, I'd appreciate it. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for this time to talk to you for a moment. I'm also a resident of 12 Oaks Estates in Waddell. I'm actually a resident of Arizona and Glendale. We are a family, are seventh-generation Arizonans, growing up in Glendale.
Name.
Brandon Kipple. 55th and Olive is where we grew up, and so we've been here our whole lives. My wife's family came here in the 1800s, before it was a state. The Malden Autos are all related together, we've been here forever. I'm currently an honorary commander at Luke Air Force Base with great relations with them, understanding the needs of the businesses and the residents and the other government officials here. I own a small business in Surprise as well, employ several residents, some from Glendale as well. This is an issue for us, that we have an encroachment of industrial buildings butting right up against a residential community. We also have already commercial buildings a half a mile away to the east of us, Red Bull Plant, and a Ball Plant, and several other plants. Another half a mile to the south of us, we have other industrial buildings going up right being built, literally surrounded on all three sides with industrial buildings. I would argue that nobody would want to raise their family, which we have six sons that we're raising in this community right now, and this becomes a very big issue for proxemics. We had a presentation from the attorney last night explaining the proxemics, and right now, this building would be 200 feet away from the houses in our community. Also, the lots that are parked, or for trailer bays, would be parked right up against our neighborhood wall. So the people in that neighborhood would be looking out and seeing trailers parked there, along with a giant building just 200 feet away, when we're already struggling with so much traffic. The other issue I wanted to bring to the council's attention is that this is a major safety issue. The school, American Leadership Academy, just built a school a mile and a half away from this location, and they enrolled 1,000 students, and they have planned to enroll 1,000 more. My children drive to school every day. I have high schoolers driving to school down Cervel Avenue, right where eight different entryways and exits to these industrial parks will be pulling trucks in and out of all day long. Not to mention the noise issues and aesthetics, but the safety issues. They'll be coming in and out all day, and there's been no studies done to see what impact this will have on traffic, the environment, and safety. The due diligence has not been done. It would be irresponsible to put this here at this time. Lastly, I would just like to say that as a young kid growing up, going to Heritage Elementary, I went to Ironwood High School, I went to Heritage, and when I was a kid there, one of our best friends, Cory Geller, was run down and killed by a truck driver who had the sun in his eyes, no fault of his own, but he saw, he didn't see Cory, and he was run over by a truck and killed. It was devastating to our community. If we increase this many trucks near these schools and residents, we will have the same thing happen, and without the due diligence to find out the impact of safety and transportation, we cannot move forward with something like this, not this close to residents. We need to have it further away in congruence with what we're trying to do in building communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Healy, you're up, after you, Mr. Stewart, if you'd be ready to go, I'd appreciate it. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for this time to talk to you for a moment. I'm also a resident of 12 Oaks Estates in Waddell. I'm actually a resident of Arizona and Glendale. We are a family, are seventh-generation Arizonans, growing up in Glendale.
Name.
Brandon Kipple. 55th and Olive is where we grew up, and so we've been here our whole lives. My wife's family came here in the 1800s, before it was a state. The Malden Autos are all related together, we've been here forever. I'm currently an honorary commander at Luke Air Force Base with great relations with them, understanding the needs of the businesses and the residents and the other government officials here. I own a small business in Surprise as well, employ several residents, some from Glendale as well. This is an issue for us, that we have an encroachment of industrial buildings butting right up against a residential community. We also have already commercial buildings a half a mile away to the east of us, a Red Bull Plant, and a Ball Plant, and several other plants. Another half a mile to the south of us, we have other industrial buildings going up right being built, literally surrounded on all three sides with industrial buildings. I would argue that nobody would want to raise their family, which we have six sons that we're raising in this community right now, and this becomes a very big issue for proxemics. We had a presentation from the attorney last night explaining the proxemics, and right now, this building would be 200 feet away from the houses in our community. Also, the lots that are parked, or for trailer bays, would be parked right up against our neighborhood wall. So the people in that neighborhood would be looking out and seeing trailers parked there, along with a giant building just 200 feet away, when we're already struggling with so much traffic. The other issue I wanted to bring to the council's attention is that this is a major safety issue. The school, American Leadership Academy, just built a school a mile and a half away from this location, and they enrolled 1,000 students, and they have planned to enroll[1695.36] from this location, and they enrolled a thousand students, and they have planned to enroll a thousand more. My children drive to school every day. I have high schoolers driving to school down Cervel Avenue, right where eight different entryways and exits to these industrial parks will be pulling trucks in and out of all day long. Not to mention the noise issues and aesthetics, but the safety issues. They'll be coming in and out all day, and there's been no studies done to see what impact this will have on traffic, the environment, and safety. The due diligence has not been done. It would be irresponsible to put this here at this time. Lastly, I would just like to say that as a young kid growing up, going to Heritage Elementary, I went to Ironwood High School, I went to Heritage, and when I was a kid there, one of our best friends, Corey Geller, was run down and killed by a truck driver who had the sun in his eyes, no fault of his own, but he saw, he didn't see Corey, and he was run over by a truck and killed. It was devastating to our community. If we increase this many trucks near these schools and residents, we will have the same thing happen. And without the due diligence to find out the impact of safety and transportation, we cannot move forward with something like this, not this close to residents. We need to have it further away, in congruence with what we're trying to do in building communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Healy, you're up. After you, Mr. Stewart, if you'd be ready to go, I'd appreciate it. Get in your name and the city you're from, sir.
Good evening. Christopher Healy, from Waddell and Twelve Oaks Residence. Did everyone receive my letter of opposition?
If you raise that up a little bit, so we can hear you better.
Did everyone receive my letter of opposition as well today? Yes, okay. Our neighborhood's been established since 2005, well before the 303 built out in the northern parkway. It was never, you know, put on notice to us. From the meeting, well, we had six days' notice for this public hearing, right? And then six days' notice for an open house meeting last night with the developer. And that's just not enough time to really process everything and get all these inputs to make these decisions. And it's clear that the developer's not prepared. You know, and hasn't done their due diligence, like Brandon was saying, in proposing this four-point-three-million-square-foot, fifty-five, fifty-foot-plus-high building with nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight loading docks, just hundreds of feet from our homes. Our homes have two-hundred-and-fifty-foot lots anyway, so it's like having one neighbor away for these setbacks. And, you know, nothing's been talked about with hours of operation, number of trucks coming through there. There's no less than six. We have one entrance to our neighborhood on Cervel Avenue, just north of the site. There's no less than six, possibly up to ten, on the proposal for Cervel access. That's a huge concern. It's right in, right out. I mean, you can imagine semi-trucks, there's a access road to the north that's twenty feet away from our wall for the park and residents, and semi-trucks are going to be turning out of, and kids are going to be trying to go down these sidewalks, and traffic going to school. You know, just, it doesn't make sense. And maybe this isn't the best site. You know, there's no access to 303 off Olive. There's no access to the industrial site from Olive due to the train tracks. There's no talk about how they're going to integrate with the train tracks, and how they're already separating the trains, because they're getting too much with the breweries that are to the east, half-mile to the east. So I think, yeah, I urge you to vote no and oppose this. And at the very least, please send us back to planning for more in-depth planning and inputs from the community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stewart, you're up. Following you is Felipe Fernandez. Again, state your name, the city you live in, sir.
Stephen Stewart. I live in Waddell in the same community, Twelve Oaks Estates. That was all you asked for, right? So, yeah, I think we've definitely been speaking about safety. I don't have too much to add, you know, based on what's been spoken about, other than my personal experience. I've, I run pretty consistently, four or five days a week, I go around the neighborhood. My, just from the buildings we have to the east of us, that you can see on the map there, the Red Bull, White Claw, and those buildings over there, over a half-mile away, twice already on my runs, one at the north entrance off of 159th Avenue to our neighborhood, we had a cyclist get hit by a car. And then at Reams and Peoria Avenue, right near the entrance to the Ball Building over there, we had another pedestrian get hit by a car. Don't know where that went, but we had emergency come out and deal with that. It's not just the trucks, you know, there's hundreds of workers that are being employed at these buildings, so we, there's, I personally witnessed them cruising down our roads at seventy-five miles an hour, up and down, because they're running late for work or trying to get home. And I don't know, you know, I can't say who's responsible for those accidents, but the increased traffic is obviously due to these buildings. I used to be able to, used to be able to go up and down the roads any day of the week. We're surrounded by agriculture, you know, so now there's these buildings going in. And as Brandon mentioned, just a half-mile south of our neighborhood, there's another building over there. So now on all sides of our neighborhood, it's just, the traffic is insane, and there's just constantly high-volume trucks and speeding. So I just wanted to touch that point on safety. I think one thing that has been mentioned, I live in the very southeast corner on that, on the perimeter wall of this neighborhood, and just from the Mark Anthony Building, which is the southernmost building you'll see over off of Reams over there right now, those big tilt panel buildings, the lighting off of that alone blasts twenty-four hours a day in my windows at night, every window along that wall, and considering they're a half-mile away, I can't imagine what we would expect at this industrial just to the south of us, and it's just blinding light at all hours. Not to mention the high-pressure exhaust that's coming out of these buildings at all hours of the day as well. It's very loud, and we, it has affected us as much where we can't even, I could barely hear my kids and wife talking, we're screaming outside just to communicate. That's a half-mile away. This one's going to be put up, you know, five hundred feet from my back door. So noise pollution, traffic pollution, and obviously the safety is one of my biggest concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Sorry about that.
State your name, sir, and the city you're from, and then Casey Thornburg? You're up, Max, go ahead, sir.
My name is Felipe Fernandez. I live in Waddell in the community of Twelve Oaks. And the future building of the industrial plants just south of our community is a big concern in regards to safety foremost. My kid rides the bus to school. He goes to Dizart School District, and the school bus stop is on Brown and Cervel. And we express concern to the school district that, you know, it was a hazard for the kids that ride the bus. So we actually had to get the bus stop relocated somewhere else within the community. To know that there's going to be so much traffic from these industrial buildings going down Cervel is a huge concern. And it's just a residential neighborhood tucked in there, and it's just getting surrounded with industrial buildings so close to our community. Second issue I have is environmental concerns. The noise alone from that building within our subdivision, you know, nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight semi-truck bays so close to our community, you know, loading and unloading all hours of the day, backup sirens and beepers on the semis. And also the lighting for the nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight bays of this industrial building. As my other neighbor mentioned, the amount of light that those buildings put off is pretty incredible, that Mark Anthony Brewing Company, right there off of Reams, we've got a Ball Core, Red Bull, and Mark Anthony. And the position of those loading docks and the positioning of the lighting for that facility is, I would compare it to a lighthouse for a guy in the ocean. I mean, it is a beacon of light. Chris Healy provided some images, aerial images of the amount of light. Where in Waddell, we have dark-skY ordinances, we don't even have streetlights. So to see that light emitting all over the community is another thing. But, yeah, I urge you to vote no for the sake of the residents and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Thornburg?
Thornburg, yes. Casey Thornburg, resident of Twelve Oaks, also resident of Twelve Oaks since 2008. Lived my whole entire life, City of Phoenix, Glendale, went to Cactus High School. Just strictly oppose what they're trying to do around our community, not only for the kids, the community, the safety. I work in law enforcement, I have a serious concern for response time, for fire, PD, on any of these industrial zones that you guys have annexed out there so far. I haven't seen any plans, or don't know of any plans of any new fire stations or police stations going up out to respond if something were to happen. But I encourage you all, I know that we're residents of Waddell, we're not in your city, but I encourage you to come out there, take a look. Look at the roads. I don't know how many of you have been out there to even see Cervel, and just imagine the amount of diesels and big trucks that are going to be driving down and engulfing this neighborhood. And I think you would agree that right now is not the time to be pushing forward on this. It needs to be reconsidered. We need to sit down, take a bigger look at it, and kind of move forward from that aspect. I don't think, I don't think the builders realized this community that was there, and I think they're just trying to throw up these industrial parks regardless of who lives in the area. And that's it. I just hope that you'll oppose it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's all the speaker cards it has. Is there anyone else wanting to speak on the issue? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to item nineteen, please.
Ordinance number O-22-69, an ordinance to the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the City of Glendale City Code Appendix A, zoning, Article III Administration, Section 3.700, variances and appeals by renumbering the current sections 3.701, 3.706 to Sections 3.708 to 3.713, and adding new Sections 3.701 to 3.707.
Okay. Public hearing is now open on item number nineteen, ordinance 022-69. We have any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. It's going to get a motion on item nineteen, ordinance 022-69.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Melner.
I move that we approve item nineteen, ordinance number O-22-69.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Melner, a second from everybody else, but I guess we'll take it from Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes out, motion carries. My understanding, Ms. Perry will present both the resolution and the ordinance under the number twenty at the same time while in public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Barr, will you please introduce item number twenty, Resolution R-22-110, and ordinance 022-70.
Resolution number R-22-110, a resolution to the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the City of Glendale, Arizona, by approving General Plan Amendment GPA 22-04 for the east half of the property located at the northwest corner of North 67th Avenue and West Maryland Avenue. Ordinance number O-22-70, an ordinance to the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning thirty-point-zero-four acres located at the northwest corner of North 67th Avenue and West Maryland Avenue from R4 Multiple Residents to PAD Planned Area Development for a development plan entitled Sixty Seven Flats and Juniper Square, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded.
Public hearing is now open on item number twenty. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, this application is GPA 22-04 for the general plan, as well as the zoning application, ZON-22-07. I will be presenting this as one presentation, but it will require separate motions and votes. Okay. The general plan request is to amend the land use designation from high-density residential, allowing up to twenty dwelling units to an acre, with the proposal being allowing up to thirty dwellings to the acre for the east half of the property. And also, the applicant is proposing to rezone the entire site from R4 to allow for a planned area development. The applicant is present as well, if council elects to ask the applicant any questions. Here's the vicinity map. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of 67th Avenue and Maryland Avenue. Here's an area map, just to give some context to the subject property in comparison to other developments around the subject property. As you can see, that there is single-family residential to the west, and then to the north, south, and east is multifamily. So general plan and the zoning map just depicting the land use designation currently being up to the twenty dwelling units to the acres, and then also where the applicant is asking to change that to up to thirty dwelling units to the acre. And then once again, the zoning application where the existing zoning allows for the R4 multifamily, and the applicant is asking to change that to a PAD, Planned Area Development. In summary, to the PAD proposal, the applicant is proposing to utilize the uses that are allowed within R4, mainly which allows for the multifamily development. They're asking to increase the residential units to where currently they're able to have six hundred, and they're proposing six hundred and five. They're also asking to increase the height. Right now, the zoning ordinance allow for a maximum height of thirty feet with two stories, where the applicant is proposing three stories, which will allow for forty feet maximum height, and then also four stories, which will allow for fifty-three feet for a maximum height. They're asking for the reduction in the site coverage. There will be streetscape along 67th, 69th, and Maryland Avenue, and then there will be four full-access drives, two being off of Maryland, and then the other two being located off of 67th. Here is a conceptual site plan that shows the Jupiter Square, which is intended for the senior living, which is ultimately is going to be restricted for those that are fifty-five years old or older. And then the sixty-seven flats, which is more for the traditional multifamily. The application was presented before Planning Commission last month. There were a few individuals who spoke on this application. Their concerns were, in summary, had to do with adequate school facilities, as well as they had concerns as it relates to parking. They presented concerns with the height, as well as just the multifamily development in its entirety. Since that time, the applicant has provided, and is within your packet, the adequate school facilities for both school districts, indicating that they have adequate school facilities. Another point that was brought up had to do with the fact of concerns with being adequate parking. The applicant, in your packet, you will see where they did a, conducted a parking study. And through that parking study, it satisfied what staff deemed to be adequate parking for the development to support the senior living component, as well as the multifamily. After hearing the concerns from the residents, we have spoken to the Transportation Department, and Transportation Department will go through the process of installing no-parking signs, so it would not allow for anyone to, from this development, to park on the street. And that- to park on the street. And that's an indication of the applicant, as well as staff, hearing the concerns that came from the residents. Another concern with the multi-development project in its entirety has to do with the setbacks. There was a stipulation that was added to, to provide additional setbacks along 69th Avenue, where in the front part of it, at the corner, it will allow for 60, 70 foot, 67 feet setback, and then 200 feet back, it will allow for a minimum of 102 feet of a setback. Those additional setbacks were staff and the applicant's way of hearing the concerns that was coming from the residents, that they were concerned about the height of the multifamily impeding into their backyards. And if the council, if you look in your packet, you will see that there is a street that separates the single-family residential from the proposal before you today. And I would like to go on record that in your packet, you did not receive all of the letters that we received from the citizens, so that was inadvertently missed from putting in the packet. But hopefully, I've summarized all of the concerns that came from the citizens. And with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions before I make, ask my questions, my comments. I want to thank the applicant and its representatives for working diligently with, with our community and our constituents, and working with the Planning Department on listening. You did a really good job on listening and, and working with them on those stipulations, so thank you very much. And then, Ms. Perry, can you talk a little bit more about, or maybe just answer, the parking issues? Because I got calls from my constituents as well with regard to parking, onsite parking. The parking study that was made was specific for, for this project, for this style and type of project, but they're also within our standards. Is that correct? The parking, the amount of parking on the, on the lot is within our standards?
Mayor and Council, the parking that they're proposing do not meet what our parking requirements would require, as far as the number of parkings, as well as the dimensions for the parking. However, within a PAD, it allows an applicant to have some deviations. So, in that PAD, in reviewing their parking study, as well as having the Transportation Department look at it, the parking study shows that they did an evaluation of the city's standards, as well as the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the Urban Land Institute. And so, based on those comparisons, and just kind of understanding the project in its entirety, that staff found that those, the proposal for the parking was acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. And I misspoke the standards, but they were allowable by the city and you and your staff.
Agreed.
And then, secondly, there was an issue with, with regard to balcony size. Can you talk about why this project's allowed to have a reduced size of balcony than what is typically our standard, and why it's, it's allowable?
Mayor and Council, I'll start off by again saying that the PAD allows for some of those deviations. If you look at market trends today, it is showing that for the multifamily, that there's not as many residents that are utilizing the private balcony open space, that they are enjoying the amenities a little bit more than the balcony areas that typically we would see within a traditional multifamily. So, when staff evaluated what they were proposing for the private open space, we looked at it and did the comparison, and felt like the variation of allowing for 60 square feet for a one-bedroom, 80 for a two, and 85 for a three was appropriate for the project, because some of it is we want residents to get out and interact within the community.
Which is, allows them the deviation from the square footage of the balcony, which was allowed by our staff, our Planning Department. And our Planning Commission approved it as such, correct?
Mayor, Councilmembers, the Planning Commission provided a recommendation for approval for council to ultimately give the approval. Planning Commission, I'm sorry, planning staff in evaluating the application in its entirety, felt it's still overall, it was a decent project, and it was acceptable.
And changing the parking or, and/or the balconies was not part of a stipulation from the Planning Commission?
Mayor and Council, no, it was not a stipulation from Planning Commission.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to preface what I'm about to say was, because I think, I think all of council's been copied on, comments made by some of the residents who were in opposition to this project. And a couple of them were my former constituents, and I know them pretty well. So, I went to the trouble of viewing the Planning Commission video, and then I read all the material that was supplied to the Planning Commission. And it raised questions for me, not necessarily the questions that the constituents had identified, but some of my own. And from what the Vice Mayor was asking about, someone has let him know that those were my concerns. So, I'm going to go back over them and visit them for a minute, because I think they're important. The first issue was that of parking. In the applicant's narrative, the applicant admits readily that it lacks 157 spaces of parking for the 67 Flats portion of the project, and that it acknowledges the city's comment that they are overparked on the Juniper Square side. So, I asked the applicant, why couldn't they perhaps adjust and move some of the parking from Juniper Square over to 67 Flats? Well, they couldn't do that. They couldn't change anything. If they changed anything, it would kill the project, which I'll talk about in a minute. So, as it stands now, according to city standards, they are short on parking in the multifamily section by 157 spaces, and overpark in the senior center side by, I think it's 200 and some spaces. Makes no sense to me. Now, these are concessions that the city granted to the applicant, and this isn't the only concession in deviation from the standard that the city granted. Typically, Glendale parking spaces are 10 by 20. We have allowed this applicant nine by 20 spaces, so that's a second concession that we've made to the applicant. A third concession is, is that Glendale, and Glendale didn't arrive at these standards, just pluck them out of thin air and say, oh, that looks like a good standard, we'll use it. Our standards are thoughtful for what we want in our community. So, one of our standards is, is that Glendale requires 100 square feet of private open space in terms of a balcony per unit. This applicant is giving 65 feet to 85 feet of private open space. So, if you're in a three-bedroom apartment, welcome to your 85-square-foot private balcony. What's that, 10 by 8? Maybe you can fit two chairs in it. Ridiculous. Then, we get to the issue of setbacks. And I do appreciate the applicant's sensitivity agreeing to a stipulation made by our Planning Commission to increase the setbacks on the western side, to accommodate those residences that live off of 69th Avenue. I do appreciate that. So, they did concede 120 feet on the eastern side. But, what does our zoning development standard say? Our development standards say, not that. Our development standards say that typically it's 20 feet for two-story buildings. But, for every foot, for every building that's a foot taller than that 20-foot standard, they have to give a reciprocal foot of setback. So, if you have a 30-foot building, you have to give an additional 10 feet of setback. So, there's 30 feet of setback. So, if it's a 40-foot building, you have to give 40 feet of setback, which is what these buildings are, 30 and 40 feet. But, that doesn't occur on the north side or the east side. I'm not sure about the south side, so I won't comment on that. So, that was another deviation from Glendale And what bothers me about that is the applicant asked for height to create more open space, to make the buildings taller, so they weren't so sprawled out over the site, but couldn't find the room to provide adequate setback space. I would have tabled this, if I thought, or make a motion to table this, if I thought I would get support. But, the applicant also told me that if I tabled it, they couldn't do the project. So, you can take that for what it's worth. So, I won't motion to table it, but I'm certainly not going to vote for it. I think that the applicant, in this case, was rigid. The, oh, and let's talk about that parking study for a minute. The parking study that the applicant used had about 30 apartment complexes that they cited that were comparable to this proposed project. They were in Gilbert, Queen Creek, Phoenix, Tolleson. There wasn't a single comparable with any project in Glendale that they used for their parking study, to justify their parking study. The applicant also said to me that he knew better. Dominion had been in the business for 50 years, building apartment complexes, and they knew what was best. They knew the appropriate number of parking spaces to put in. So, they didn't even make a concession to Glendale standards. They knew already, and that's why they applied for the number of parking spaces they did. So, I am just disappointed. I, and let, and don't get me wrong, I don't have a problem with the project itself. I don't have the problem with apartments going there. I don't have a problem with the density, because by statute or by law, you can put 600 units there and, and be legal, R4. So, it's not the density, it's not the concept, it's not the location. But, I don't think they should be providing something that it does not meet city standards, just because they're affordable housing. That's the bottom line for me. So, I really don't have a question other than if you can explain why you felt it was appropriate to grant all these deviations from Glendale standards. That I really would like to know.
Mayor, Council, when staff did the analysis, we worked with the applicant. We looked at what the trend is. We took in consideration how parking is starting to change. Our zoning ordinance speaks of parking requirements that was adopted back in 1993. So, there's been a shift in the dimensions of parking. A lot of multifamily developers have been indicating that our parking standards are higher in some capacities.
Yes.
But, at the same token, to your point, Councilwoman Clark, through the mayor, is that it's affordable housing development, at least for the multifamily portion of it. So, another thing, another item that we took in consideration is the possibility that some of the individuals living there will use transit. So, with the parking study that justified what they were proposing, and also understanding that there was transit opportunities, that we accepted it from a planning standpoint, to say that we can move forward with the application.
Okay. I appreciate your explanation. I appreciate your answer. I don't necessarily agree with it. I don't buy into the fact that reliance upon transit is a justifiable reason to reduce the amount of parking required, but I do appreciate your response, and thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the, the deviations are allowable. Staff felt it necessary to approve them. Also, the, I'm told that the traffic, not traffic, but the parking study was also based on the, the assumed or presumed occupancy rate of the units being made. And yes, folks in my demographics do use public transportation, and this will be no exception in this area. So, yes, that is a fact. And then, the balcony size, I like to think that those families are going to want to spend some time outside, and I just want to, worthy of mentioning, a playground, a fitness center, a swimming pool, a spa, a clubhouse, and an outdoor kitchen, which allows those folks to come outside and not have to use their balcony for the amenities that they have available to them. So, this is a great project. It has a affordable housing component to it. It's going to increase that inventory. This is good for Glendale. This is good for families. Good listening by, by the applicant and the representatives. I do want to speak to my two constituents who emailed me, and I spoke to one of them in length. I value you. I value your concerns. I thank you for being engaged. I thank you for reaching out to me. I'm listening. I did listen to you. However, this is a good project, and the school district's on board. They have the adequate facilities. They're a little different on, as to how they decide they have adequate facilities. It's not just the school across the street. There's boundaries, and there's more schools within the boundaries. So, I do want to thank my constituents for staying engaged, remaining engaged, and I appreciate you and value you, but I am in support of this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you're going to know the answer to this, but how accessible is this by our current transit routes? Is this, is there a fixed route stop here, or what is it, is it in the gust, the bus distribution area, or we talked about people using transit to get to it? So, how accessible is this site using the existing transit that we have?
Mayor, Councilmembers, the best answer I can give you at this moment is just south of 67th and Maryland Avenue is a bus route.
Mayor, is it at Bethany, or is it closer to, where is the bus stop?
Mayor and Council, my understanding that it's closer to Maryland, just south of Maryland and 67th. And then, I'm being motioned that there's actually two, but I can only identify one prior to the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that answers the question, though, that it is accessible using our existing transit system. Mayor, and if I could, one other question. You mentioned that there were some citizens' letters. How many letters were there? I don't need to see them, but I'd just like to know how many there were, and were they all in opposition?
So, Mayor and Council, it was approximately, there's 12. But, if I can quantify that just a little bit, there, there are in opposition, but they're basically coming from two of the residents that are located in the single-family residential development.
Mayor, if I could clarify, so 12 letters, but from two people?
So, Mayor and Council, what ended up happening is when they sent correspondence to, like, staff, the staff would respond back, and then they would send another email. And so, therefore, it appears as if there's several different oppositions, but there were follow-ups, and them expressing additional concerns or wanting clarification.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. We have any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Anyone else needing to speak on this item?
Wanted to speak, if I could, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Clark's, I guess, real drive to get her point across regarding this type of, of housing. And as I, I listened to that, I was moved by, by the words and, about what she said. But then, I had to reflect back upon, what is the purpose of this project? This is an affordable housing project. And we've all seen what's happened to our rent in, in our city. And we've all seen what's happened to our rent in our city and in the valley. Rents have skyrocketed. And we have put out a call to builders to build housing that is affordable, that the lower-income population can afford to live and rent in. And this is one of those projects, I believe. You may know that last year, the legislature attempted to pass a rule that would take away the city's authority to regulate any kind of zoning and allow builders to build whatever they wanted, wherever they wanted. And it came close to passing. And it was due because of the concern of affordable housing in the valley. That was the concern. I've had legislators tell me that is why they were concerned about it, because there's not enough affordable housing. And I believe this project should be moved forward because it will provide affordable housing. And it will, again, it's surrounded by three sides, by multifamily. Sounds like we only had really two residents that had a concern. I believe it is beneficial for the city of Glendale and for its residents to have this project to be built in the city. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. I would just remark on this. I'm not opposed to affordable housing. I said generally, I like this project. So it's not the concept of affordable housing. But I don't think the standards for affordable housing should be reduced because it's affordable housing. When you think about this project, say hypothetically, because I have no idea what it would cost to build, but say hypothetically, this project costs $15 million. They get tax credits that are equal to 30% of the project. So under those circumstances, they can certainly afford to meet Glendale standards. And that's what bothers me. I don't think anyone, any developer, should use the mantle of affordable housing to try to get deviations from Glendale standards. If they can get deviations, they should be made because they're giving something extra. And when I hear they're putting in a clubhouse and a pool and all of this stuff, hello, do you know any apartment complex that's being built these days that doesn't have a clubhouse and a pool and a fitness center? They all do. So that's not something unusual that you wouldn't find at other apartment complexes center. Again, I'm not going to request tabling, but I am going to vote no. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item number 20, Resolution R. 22-110?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 20, R. 22-110.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second, Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Mayor, let me kind of explain my vote. I listened to what Councilmember Mallon had to say and go in with it because it's affordable housing. But Councilmember Clark makes a compelling case to keep standards up for the people in more need and affordable housing. I'm going to vote nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Having listened to the questions and concerns of my fellow councilmembers, it remains with me, my biggest concern about this property is the nine-foot-wide parking spaces. That just seems unbelievable in this day and age. But, I mean, vehicles and people are bigger than they've ever been. So I can't imagine where most people are going to be able to fit their car. But if the developer thinks he can sell it, and it's in a multifamily neighborhood, and there's very little neighborhood objection to it, I'm going to go along with it because we do need more housing. And the biggest factor, I think, is the quantity of housing we have as opposed to the amenities provided. So with that, I vote yes.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Yep. Got a comment to make.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Clark and others have--
Would you like to explain your vote, sir?
I'll explain my vote, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark has some valid concerns. She has the right to voice those. But at the end of the day, I know she'll be there with me in the groundbreaking, and she'll be there for the ribbon-cutting ceremony. I know you will. I vote aye. Thank you.
And I'll explain my vote. I had an opportunity to do a ride-along with our police department on Saturday night, and I can tell you, there's a lot of people that's hurting right now. There's an awful lot of shortages on homes. And I will support almost anything that is going to give people a chance to have a roof over their head that's affordable, that will allow them to start getting a normal, as close to normal, life as possible. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. But is it better than living in the streets or having a place that is a dump? Absolutely. So I do support this. With that, I vote aye. It does pass. Can I get a motion on item number 20, ordinance 022-70?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve ordinance number 022-70.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second, from Councilmember Hugh, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 21, ordinance 022-71.
Ordinance number O. 22-71, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Glendale, Arizona by approving zoning text amendment ZTA 22-01, amending the zoning ordinance, Article 7, Section 7.800, medical marijuana, providing for severability, setting forth an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded.
Public hearing is now open on item number 21, ordinance 022-71.
Mayor and Council, this is a text amendment for the medical marijuana. The request is to amend a section of the medical marijuana. And basically, the objective is to allow for the co-location of specific marijuana-related facilities within the industrial zonings, which are classified as the M1 light industrial and the M2 heavy industrial, and also to allow for assurance of control of potential emissions. Staff sees this as an incentive for individuals that wants to operate these type of facilities so that we can have them more or less concentrated in the industrial zonings versus allowing them to be within our commercial zonings. So basically, the ordinance addresses the application, the process, the type and the scale of activities and the enclosures for the off-site cultivation facilities, the dispensaries, infusion, and the manufacturing, and the designated caregiver cultivation. It prohibits emissions. However, it doesn't necessarily give any type of regulations on how to prohibit the emissions. Then also, it establishes a minimum distancing requirement between the marijuana facilities. The summary of the code amendment is for the emission control plan to be required as part of the application, and then allowing these dispensaries in M1 and M2, and then the co-location of the dispensary cultivation, infusion, and manufacturing facilities by eliminating the distance requirement in the M1 and M2 zoning district. And with that, Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little confused about what is meant by emissions and emission control. Could you help me with that?
Mayor, council members, so basically, the objective, it actually came from the planning commissioners. A lot of times, you can smell the marijuana from the facilities. And so even though we say that they cannot spill over outside of the building, because you can still smell it, planning commissioners felt as though we needed to require them, as part of their application, to provide the city team with an actual plan on how they would address the emission of it. And then therefore, when we're reviewing the application, as well as with the Building Safety Division, we can look at their plan and hold them accountable through code compliance to make sure they are following the plan for the emission.
Okay.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor.
You clear as a bell? No, okay. Go ahead.
That raises a question for me because I thought you said that there are no emission standards within this ordinance. So code is going to enforce what?
So Mayor and Council, right now, in the ordinance, it states that they're prohibited of the emission. However, in this adoption, if council adopts the text amendment, we're basically saying that the applicants need to provide us with a plan that demonstrates how they're going to control the odor from coming from the buildings. And then therefore, our Building Safety Department can look at that plan to ensure that it meets codes, whatever codes that are applicable to it. And then therefore, we can use that plan to help facilitate of ensuring that the odor is not coming from the building.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could continue. I would suggest that staff provide some kind of guidelines. Maybe not hard and fast rules, but at least guidelines by what they mean by emissions. What kind of emissions are we trying to control? Is there any distance? I mean, something. These people are going to be flying blind when they try to provide an emissions control plan because they don't know, they don't have a clue what it is we don't want. Do you have a response?
Mayor and Council, some of these facilities already have their own plan. It's just that we have not required it as part of their application. But taking your comment in consideration, as council is aware, we are working on the adoption of the UDC, and that we can look into seeing if there's specific regulations or guidelines that we can give in addition to the emission portion of it.
I think that would be fair to the applicant and also helpful to them. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
Anyone else needing to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item number 21, ordinance 022-71?
Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to ordinances. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 22 022-72?
Ordinance number O. 22-72, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of a portion of parcel number APN 146-06-061, located south and west of approximately 52nd Avenue and West Glendale Avenue to Southwest Builders LLC, and directing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the sale, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening on items number 22 through 25 is Economic Development Assistant Director Jesse Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next four items before you are purchase and sale agreements to sell portions of city-owned parcels generally located south and west of 52nd and Glendale avenues. In this geographic area, the city owns several parcels of real property, which, based on recorded documentation, functioned as rail spurs until the early 1900s, when they were subsequently abandoned to the city. Over time, this area developed into a commercial district, and the intrusive location of the city-owned real property serves as an obstruction to the current commercial operations in the area. Therefore, the sale of these parcels to the adjacent property owners is deemed in the best interest of the city. As you'll recall, at the October 11 city council meeting, this body approved a purchase and sale agreement with Daniel F. Pratt Enterprises. These four items are a continuation of the city's efforts to move these transactions forward to alleviate current and future impediments to the existing commercial district and absolve the city of future liability. The buyers named within the agreements tonight include Southwest Builders LLC, Floriani Living Trust, and Sugar Aspirations LLC. Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation for the next four items. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion for item 22, ordinance 022-72?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve item 22, ordinance 22 72.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, second from Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We had a similar ordinance two weeks ago that you mentioned, and we have four tonight. We may, well, have others coming. I'm not sure. I guess to say it simply, if I owned this land personally, I would not sell it at this price. And therefore, on behalf of the taxpayers that do own this land, I'm reluctant to sell it at this price. And therefore, Mayor, I vote no.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 23 022-73?
Ordinance number O. 22-73, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of an approximately 4,097-square-foot portion of parcel number APN 146-06-062, located south and west of approximately 52nd Avenue and West Glendale Avenue to Sugar Aspirations LLC, and directing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the sale, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
So I'm not going to continue to present, Mayor.
Any questions? No questions. Can I get a motion on item 23?
Yes, Mayor.
Ordinance 022-73.
Yes, Mayor. I move we adopt ordinance number O. 22-73.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
No.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 24 022-74?
Ordinance O. 22-74, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of a portion of parcel number APN 146-06-062, located south and west of approximately 52nd Avenue and West Glendale Avenue to Floriani Living Trust dated October 25, 2017, and directing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the sale, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Motion for item 24, ordinance 022-74?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt ordinance 022-74.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
No.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion all carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 25, ordinance 022-75?
Ordinance O. 22-75, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of certain real estate located approximately at 5202 West Lamar Avenue to Sugar Aspirations LLC, and directing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the sale, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Somebody's phone's going off. Okay. Questions from the council? None. Can I get a motion on item 25, ordinance 022-75?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve ordinance O. 22, or 75, item number 25.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
No.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you order, would you read number 26?
Ordinance number O. 22-76, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 24, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Specific Parking Prohibition, Section 24-65, Sale, Storage, and Repair of Vehicles, and setting forth an effective date. Ordinance number 022-77, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 24, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Specific Parking Prohibition, Section 24-68, Parking on Residential Lots, BN, setting forth an effective date. Ordinance number 022-78, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 24, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Specific Parking Prohibition, Section 24-68, Parking on Residential Lots, Subsection E3, Vehicle Parking and Storage, and setting forth an effective date.
Mr. St. John?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. This is a request for council to adopt three ordinances that amend Chapter 24. I'll walk through each of the ordinances, what they call for, and then answer any questions you have on each of the components. So, the first ordinance essentially eliminates 2465 subsection G, which is redundant and confusing language, to the new language adopted by council in June of 2021, under 24-68, as it relates to the parking and storage of vehicles on a person's private property. Ordinance 2277 deals with the provision adopted again in June of '21 by this council, allowing for a maximum of one vehicle per 400 square feet of living space on any residential property within the city. This would amend that, allowing for not less than three vehicles to be parked on any residential property regardless of the size of the dwelling unit. Again, we have some residences in the city of Glendale that are under 800 square feet, and so by the current ordinance, they would only be allowed to park one vehicle on that property, and they may have a half acre, quarter acre, even a full acre with just a 700 square foot trailer. So this would give them the opportunity to park up to three vehicles on that property. And then the last ordinance, 22-78, deals with auxiliary drives. And to again define auxiliary drives, those are driveways that are non-contiguous to the primary driveway leading to a carport or garage on a residential property. They are on the opposite side of the property from that designated driveway, typically and oftentimes leading to an RV gate, but not always. Aesthetically, parking on that auxiliary drive often looks better than parking on what would normally be approved as an auxiliary drive on the non-dwelling unit side of the driveway. And that's just the aesthetics of certain properties. This amendment would have the impact of allowing people to park RVs, boats, trailers, cars, anything defined in the code as a vehicle, on that auxiliary drive. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about any of the three ordinances.
Any questions? Go ahead.
You knew I had a question. This confused me when we talked about it in workshop because some of the examples that we were shown were showing, I guess depicting anyway, a differentiation between the granite in the yard and the granite in the driveway. So, how clearly is that going to be defined in code so that residents know that there has to be a clear delineation that this is a driveway, this isn't part of my front yard?
So, mayor, councilmember Tomachoff, the code currently states in its entirety, so it's in several different sections that define this, that a parking space needs to be distinctly different from the landscaped area of your front yard. So if you're using crushed granite as a dustproof surface, then it needs to be a different granite than what is otherwise used as decorative granite for your landscaped area. So you could have a red granite as your decorative and a gray crushed granite for your dustproof parking space. You can use concrete and pavers. Obviously, those are approved dustproof surfaces. And then you wouldn't be allowed to exceed or to be in violation of any other section of the code, of course. So, as we discussed in ordinance 2277 about the number of vehicles allowed to be parked in front of a dwelling or in front of a residence, you can't exceed one per 400 square feet. So if you have a three-car driveway and a 1,200 square foot home, you wouldn't be able to use an auxiliary drive because your three-car driveway is your allowable space. You also have to be within either the 40% or 50% of the total front yard being used as parking or maneuvering. So all those different provisions combined together protects the city from some blighting issues that may occur. And to your point, in the workshop for any constituent that might go back and watch, one of the examples I used, the person did not have distinctly different granite, but yet they were parked on it as it was. It appeared to be a landscaped area, not a designated driveway. And I apologize for making, bringing that example. It was merely an example of where the auxiliary drive exists.
Mayor, if I could, so, and I think I had said at the time that, I mean, my feeling was that you should have to have actually pour a driveway, but after talking to councilmember Melner, I mean, I don't want to create hardships for residents, but could we at least require some sort of border or something to designate that this is not part of the front yard?
Mayor, councilmember Tomachoff, that is also a provision that exists in the code today.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion on item 26, ordinance 022-76?
I have a speaker card on that.
Can I get a motion on item 26, ordinance 022-76?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we approve ordinance 022-78 and waive reading beyond the title, oh, 76, excuse me, and waive reading beyond the title.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion we've already had. I do have two speaker cards. Norma Garcia, you'll come up. I'll need you to state your name. I do not need your address, just your crossroads or the district that you live in. And then Mr. Wilfong, you'll be up right after if you'd be ready to go. I appreciate it.
My name is Norma Garcia. My cross streets are 51st Lane and Greenway. I think the speaker prior to myself answered my question because I would like to be able to park on a concrete driveway that leads to my backyard. I had received a violation this year after living in my home 49 years, and I called my council member, and I knew that you were discussing it tonight, so I came. But I believe that the, it has been addressed with the speaker prior to me, so I feel pleased that that's a possibility, that we'll be able to use a concrete driveway to drive on.
Thank you. And you said how many years?
Forty-nine years.
Forty-nine years, amazing. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilfong.
Warren Wilfong, Alcatel District. I was kind of like on the fence on this one. You know, the reason why I was kind of like going with this is because it's already happening out there. You know, code didn't enforce this in the first place, so it has already developed in this as being a normal thing. The only thing I would like to change is that, and let me read it to you, the vehicle parking in the front yard, unscrewing sky yard shall be permitted on, the added language, a dustproof driveway, non-contiguous to the driveway described in A above, that is not in the front of a dwelling of a unit or a home that complies with the regulations of 2468, C and D. What it doesn't regulate is how many vehicles. It doesn't say, and I always go in the focus of saying, if I make this complaint, there's three vehicles on this side of the driveway. Well, it doesn't state that it's only allowed to one. And I think that was the original intention, that we're only going to have one vehicle on that side. So if you can make a stipulation or amendment to this addressing that only one vehicle is allowed to park on that side of the driveway, I think we'd be all in favor of that. The other one is, I always go with diagrams. When I read this, I don't know what you're talking about. You know, the only reason I know about it is because I park, you know, I get involved. So if a resident is reading this, they don't know what they're talking about this. So there should be a diagram explaining or showing where this auxiliary driveway is at and which one they're talking about that's going to allow one vehicle. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion also carries. Now, is there a motion on item 26, ordinance 022-77?
Mayor? I move we pass and adopt ordinance 022-77 and waive reading beyond the title.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Turner, a second from councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Can I get a motion on item 26, ordinance 022-78?
Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I move we pass and adopt ordinance 022-78 and waive reading beyond the title.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Turner, a second from councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Mayor?
Hearing none. Roll call vote. We got a baby getting tired, so let's move on. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
I'd like to explain my vote.
Explain your vote. Go ahead.
Regarding Mr. Wilfong's comment, I believe that the ordinances about the minimum number of cars or the maximum of cars that a property can have on its front yard addresses how many cars they can park total. So if a resident chooses to put two cars on an auxiliary driveway and one car or two cars on a regular driveway, I don't think that would be inappropriate. So I don't know that limiting it to one car would be appropriate. For that reason, I'm voting aye.
Councilmember Melner votes aye. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
No.
Vice mayor, Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Moving on to council comments and suggestions. Start off with councilmember Clark.
Thank you, mayor. Yesterday, I was a pinch hitter, although I couldn't think of a football term to use instead of pinch hitter, which is for baseball. I went down to the Tempe Center of the Arts representing the city of Glendale on behalf of the mayor for an NFL host, Arizona Host Committee, press conference. And at that press conference, they announced all the great activities that will be associated for Super Bowl week when it comes in February. And that, by the way, is a little over 100 days away. Oh, we're just counting them down. I think we hear all the time how many days are left for the Super Bowl. It is coming. But the one event that I would encourage everyone to go to is the one free event, and that's the NFL Experience at Margaret T. Hans Park. And it's usually a week long, and it's in Phoenix. And it's the one activity that a family can go to that you don't have to buy tickets. Everything else, you have to, you have to get tickets for the event. But this one's free, and it's got things like punt passes and kick for the kids and all kinds of activities. And it's a shopper's trap. They have all kinds of NFL goodies for sale. And I guarantee you, you can't walk out of the building without having bought about $100 worth of stuff. But nevertheless, it's free to get you in there, to buy the merchandise, but also it affords your kids a great time getting involved in football and the experience. So that's during NFL Super Bowl week, Margaret T. Hans Park in Phoenix. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh.
Yes, to help councilmember Clark, you would have been called the second stringer.
That's what it, yes.
I've been told.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Melner?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, mayor. I'd like to remind residents that councilmember Melner and I are co-hosting a water resources update next Thursday evening, November 3, at 6:00 PM at Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center. Our water services staff will be on hand to present an update on Colorado River water supply and issues and an update on, I guess, how do I say it? We're updating the incentives for water conservation, so they'll be presenting on that also. We'll be providing boxed lunches, so you won't have to worry about dinner. Just please RSVP so we make sure we have enough food for everyone, and it'll be at 6 o'clock at Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center next Thursday, November 3. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, mayor. I'd just like to remind all residents that tomorrow night at 6:00 PM in these council chambers is the public meeting regarding the project to remodel City Hall, council chambers, parking garage, amphitheater in Murphy Park. The development team that we have contracted with will be here to, I believe, present and answer questions, and I encourage all residents that are interested in this project to come down here tomorrow night. It will also be broadcast, I believe, on our Channel 11 and our YouTube and our Facebook Live. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Just got an announcement, if you want to take it as that. This diocese is represented by many walks of life, and I know that many of these council members, in speaking with them, they serve because of the passion they have for their community, and they want to affect change in the communities that they reside in. That is, that was no exception and no difference for former councilmember Norma Alvarez. It is with sadness that I announced that former councilmember Norma Alvarez passed away yesterday afternoon. Her photo is behind me. Councilmember, former councilmember Alvarez was an employee of the city of Glendale for nearly 21 years, starting in 1987, and retiring in 2007 as the city's community services administrator. She went on and was elected in 2011 and served through 2014. Councilmember Alvarez left a slew of contributions to this community. A lot of young men and women and adults today are doing well in their communities because of the upbringings that Norma shared with them and with their families. She worked in the cap office and helped many families. I appreciate her. I respect her and her family. God bless Norma, and she did quite a bit. If you knew Norma, she took no crap from anybody. It is what it is, and it's her way or no way. She's served well. She did good, and she's not for the faint of heart. If you ever had a conversation with her, you rarely won the debate. So, God bless her, and I just want to let everybody know that former councilmember served this city, she's served well, and her family is dealing with her passing. Thank you, mayor.
All right, thank you. And I just really would like to echo what the vice mayor just said. Councilmember Alvarez, she didn't hold nothing back. She told you exactly where she was at, and she was never, ever accused of not being passionate about caring for the people that she served for. Now, she didn't always do it the best in the world, but nobody tried harder than her.
That's right.
So with that, our prayers are with her family. So with that, our prayers are with her family. So we will move on to our citizens' comments. I do need everyone to pay attention. Next on the agenda is the citizens' comments. We make the opportunity available to our citizens to bring information and business before the council that is not on a print agenda. Now, before I welcome speakers to the podium, I want to remind this audience and anyone speaking tonight that this is a public meeting, and as of the chair, I'm not tolerating any profanity or threats to this council or staff or employees. If you violate the rules, you'll be asked to leave. Simple as that. So if we can keep this calm, get your point out, make sure everybody understands where you're coming from, that would be awesome, and that gets the most benefit for why you're here. So with that said, when you come up, you'll have three minutes. I'm going to ask you all to state your name. If you live in the city of Glendale, state that. Tell us your district. If you know what it is. If you don't, just give us the crossroads. I'm not interested in your home address. If you don't live in Glendale, tell us that. Tell us what city you're from. You'll have three minutes, and then I will announce your name, ask you to come up, and then I'll also announce the person that's going to be following you. So if you'll work your way up to the front, so we can do this quickly. If I don't pronounce your name right, forgive me, because some of these are not the easiest to figure out. I think some of you must be doctors. So we'll start off, it looks like Anna Hernandez. And then following that, I believe, is Maria Martinez. If you'll be ready to go, work your way up towards the front, please. Ms. Hernandez, you have three minutes. If you'll state your name and the city or the crossroads that you're from.
Thank you. My name's Anna Hernandez. I live in Phoenix, incoming state senator for LD 24, which is part of where we're at now, also part of the district where Juan Carlos was killed earlier in July. I'm here in support of the family to urge this council to meet the demands of the family, to ensure they get the full reports from Glendale PD around the incident, that they get all unredacted body-worn camera, that the cell phones that were confiscated that day from witnesses that were in their homes are returned to those witnesses. Also, to urge the council to request an independent investigation that does not involve Buckeye or Glendale PD. We also demand that the family be treated with compassion and humanity and be communicated with. To date, there has been zero communication from Glendale PD or anybody involved in the investigation, providing them with any updates on what is going on. I know that Vice Mayor is working on trying to get everything over to the family. We just really request that that is of the most urgency. We saw that Glendale PD released video that they initially stated did not exist. So we feel that it is of the most urgency that all of the body-worn camera footage from that day that is unredacted is shown to the family so that they can start getting answers into what exactly happened that ended up in the death of their 15-year-old child. As someone that has experienced, that continues to live through the experience from Phoenix PD, I can tell you that this is a very, very traumatic experience that we live through every day. And obtaining as many answers as possible, it doesn't fully heal us, but it does give us insight into what actually happened. And that is what the family is asking. They want to know why this happened and why there is not enough information provided to them. Again, I just urge you to really push Glendale PD and everybody involved in the investigation to provide this family answers in this very traumatic and painful time in their lives. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, you're up next. And then Jose Borquez, I believe. Huh? Bohorgas.
Hi, my name is Maria Martinez, and Juan Carlos was my nephew.
What city did you live in?
Oh, I'm sorry. Phoenix, 83rd Avenue in Encanto.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Juan Carlos was my nephew. He lived with me when he passed away. When we were at the hospital, we were told my nephew was stable. The police didn't let us go into the hospital. They said hospital policy said we couldn't go in and see him. We come to find out he passed away through social media. No one told the family anything. We're outside waiting in the hot sun for hours on end, waiting to go see our family member. And they told us that he was stable, but hospital policy said we couldn't go in. We get the medical report. Hospital tells us Glendale Police told them not to cooperate with the family. So we just want to know why. Why did we have to find out through social media that our child is dead? Why? Why couldn't we be there with him when he was dying? Why? Why did they take witnesses' phones away that were nowhere near the scene? They were in their home recording. Why? Why were their phones taken away? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jose, are you in the room?
State your name and the city you live in, sir. My name is Jose Bohorgas. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. Crossroads are 83rd Avenue and Encanto. And I was going to speak about my brother Juan Carlos, that he was not able to be given a fair trial. And he was cut short from his life, not able to fulfill his journey of life, and not be able to live as a person. His rights were taken, and he was killed excessively. Said he was shot 11 times, which I think seems a little too much for a 140-pound kid. And yeah, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Annalise Ortiz, and then Luke Black, you'll be up right after her if you'll be ready.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Annalise Ortiz, and I am the incoming state representative of Arizona's 24th Legislative District, which encompasses South Glendale, including the area where 15-year-old Juan Carlos was tragically shot and killed by Glendale Police. I met this beautiful family tonight, and, you know, I'm just so heartbroken to hear that they found out about this tragedy through social media. They were told that video wasn't available, and then saw video on social media. That is just heartbreaking, cruel, and it's unacceptable. And tonight, I'm just asking all of you to please think about what it would be like to be in the shoes of this family who have lost a 15-year-old child, who can't even receive the most basic of answers from the city responsible for taking his life. It is basic human decency to treat this family like the victims that they are, to show them humanity, love, and compassion. I ask you to please deliver on their demands. Finally, I ask you to please direct your police department to conduct an independent investigation. As a former strategist with the American Civil Liberties Union, I have seen several investigations of this nature play out across the valley. And what we see is that there is ongoing bias and systemic problems with these investigations. So I ask that the police department be directed to investigate with no involvement from Buckeye or Glendale PD, who were both at the scene of Juan's murder. I also just want you to consider how important it is to have accountability for law enforcement and transparency in our community. I hope that you, as city leaders, can make these changes to direct a true independent investigation to get this family closer to justice for Juan Carlos. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Black, you're up. And then Don Concedin.
My name is Luke Black. I reside in the city of Phoenix. I am representing Poder in Action and AZ Poder. We do work with communities, primarily on the West Side, Maryvale, South Glendale. We've been doing that work since 2016. We work with families of folks that are killed by police. This room back here, if anybody that is here with Juan Carlos, with their family, if you could stand and be represented. This is the family, and this is the community of a 15-year-old boy who, on July 6, four months ago, was murdered by your police department. We say murdered because he was a 140-pound 15-year-old who was sitting in a car who was shot 11 times. He was pulled from the car, thrown on the ground, and shot while he was on the ground. This is your police department. This is what they did. The residents of that community who were recording what happened with their phones were intimidated by the police. Their phones were confiscated from their home. The family has gone four months with no police report. They were told that no video existed until that video was leaked by the police department on social media. At every step of the way, this family has been treated with disrespect. They're your constituents. They pay taxes. They're part of this city. They deserve respect. They deserve humanity. Their family had a child taken from them by your officers. Like, this is unacceptable. The way that this family has been treated is unacceptable by any standard. I want to reiterate the demands that this family has. We demand that the police report be released. Four months, we still do not have the police report. We demand that all the unredacted camera footage be released. Y'all have it. The police clearly have it. They're putting it on social media. We demand the return of the compensated phones to the witnesses that saw this unfold. Your police department is holding evidence away from the families, away from people that were involved in that day. We demand an independent investigation. Officers from Buckeye and Glendale were involved in this, and they're the ones that are investigating their own. You cannot expect justice when the very people that murdered that child are the ones that are investigating him, the officers that shot him. We demand that this family be treated with respect. Simple, decent respect. And lastly, we demand that the cops that killed this child be held accountable. They are your officers. You have a responsibility to protect your people. Please do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Concedin. And then, Mr. Wilfong, you'll be right after her.
My name's Don Concedin. I'm...
I'm sorry. I know I get that wrong every time.
I'm sorry. My name is Don Concedin. I live in Suaro District. First, before I go on my rant here, I want to extend my condolences to that family. That hit me hard, as it will probably a lot of people. I'm here because of some code issues that we've been having over in Granada Estates, but it has gotten really out of hand. I don't know how familiar you are with some of the website that people have been using, Nextdoor, the website. However, I'm being targeted by the website, actually by one individual. And I'm going to read to what he wrote. And it's actually targeted to you guys, too. I don't know if you know about it or if you've seen it. It says, "If you're getting code violations, having too many vehicles on your driveway, or found that you have about paved concrete, gravel, or changes your driveway," it is, I'm sorry, violations, "please call the code enforcer on the ticket and ask if Joyce Captain or Don Concedin, they're allowed to tell you their names." They're not allowed to tell you their names, but they can say yes or no if you ask them that. "If the answer is yes, join me in a lawsuit. I am filing against them. It won't cost you anything. I'm paying the hefty fees, but I'm not worried about that because I'm suing for 75% of my attorney fees. I don't tolerate bullies, and I am putting a stop to this. This is supposed to be a free country, blah, 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 blah." I'm not going to go on with the rest of it. I have not filed one complaint. You will not find one complaint with my name on it. I have talked to the residents. I do live over there. Mr. Melnar has picked me up at the house over there, went for a drive. Okay? I've had people call Granada Estates, the junkyard of Glendale. Okay? And a few other things that I can't mention here because I'm not allowed to curse. However, I am doing what I can for the best of my community. I see it, sir. So I have asked, the last time I was here, if we could do something about putting in a town hall meeting so that we can explain to the people of Granada Estates why they're getting these violations. Okay? I haven't heard anything, but that's okay. I'm not...
I do need you to wrap it up, please.
All right. I'm not here to hurt anybody, but I do want my area cleaned up, and I do want it to look nice, like it did when I moved in 30 years ago. I don't think that's asking too much of the city of Glendale, and I don't think it's asking too much of the people that live in that area to clean up their pig mess, because that's what it is.
Yeah, I'm going to have to cut. Thank you. Mr. Wilfong.
Warren Wilfong, Oaxaca City District. So it looks like it's the night of accountability. So I want to thank the council members for fixing this problem. 13 months, 13 months to get this corrected. I was not told the truth. You were not told the truth. They did everything possible to deceive what was going on here. And the bottom line is, they all knew they did something wrong, but they didn't want to fix it. So there's zero accountability on what code compliance did. And this is the management I'm talking about. Tim Bowling...
Mr. Wilfong, no.
Okay, sorry.
We're not going there.
Okay. Code compliance management knew what they did, and they chose to cover it up. They covered it up, and we fought, and fought, and fought. I asked for proof for what they were saying. They never gave it to me. And there's zero accountability. The city manager does not hold anybody accountable. Still, why am I bringing this up? Because it's going to happen again. Because right now, I can tell you that we're already setting up for certain things where we're going to be fighting about again. Because they're not enforcing it as written, as Rick St. John stated in his recording I showed you. And that is the problem. They do not enforce, and they do not hold accountable. This is the old habit that they've been doing for the last five years. And, you know, I can say one thing for sure. I appreciate what Rick St. John has done. He realizes what we're trying to do. We're fighting the establishment that's been in there for five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there being no further business before this council, and I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. There's no objection. This council meeting is adjourned.